Sorry. Welcome to the October 10th Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board Meeting. All board members are present except for Bill Sexton, who is excused tonight. Is he on vacation?
Yeah.
Good for him.
I'm in California, I think.
Yay. Approval of the consent agenda?
Chair, I make a recommendation that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comments. We have two people tonight. Miles Schlesinger, did you want to comment now or during a committee report? Okay, terrific.
I'm Miles Schlesinger, and I am a resident of Lincoln City. The first item I would like to bring before the board is a project I started when I was authorized by Paul Robertson, who was our manager, a very, very, very long time ago. And that project was the 2016 $25,000 fishing derby. When I had completed my list of 10 items, including identifying a fishing expert and securing ODFW's approval in October of 2015, I took the information and waited for Paul to bring it to the newly elected board. And I waited, and waited, and waited. And finally, I went to Palm Springs in March for a month's vacation, and I got a thank-you note from Paul for my continued support at the Devils Lake Water Improvement District, which sounded very false and like a form letter. So I called Julie Sexton, and she advised me to watch the board meeting, which I did, because I had the use of a computer at the time. For the next, and I returned to Lincoln City for the next board meeting, and I thought it was almost as bad as the Paul's public firing. At that time, I think we went ahead with our plans because our temporary manager, Tom Wood, filled out the application forms for ODFW and submitted it, which we got approval for. Then Josh joined us in December. Tom and I got him up to speed, and we applied to the VCB for a grant. We were granted a, we were given a grant, although it was substantially less than I requested. But there were two restrictions. It was not a regatta, so there was no food and beverage allowed, and that was part of the party that I wanted to provide. So we found out that Sandy Gruber, a city staff member, had talked to the city attorney, and she wanted us to enforce the deed restrictions, which was a two-page document given by the donors of the regatta park. So you all joined me, and I believe Bill spoke at the city council meeting. And we asked the city council to get the deed restriction lifted or make sensible rules. And that was the time when the mayor was up for reelection, and it was quite contentious with the city council. And finally, the new mayor was elected, and he's a friend of Devils Lake Water Improvement District, I think you know and realize. And they hired Tonkin Torp, a very good Portland attorney, attorneys. And on September 23rd, 2019, I got an email from Ed Greystad, who's the Visitors and Convention Bureau manager, that the deed was eliminated, the deed restriction was eliminated. So I then invited a team of Josh, Ed, Jeannie, and Tom Rice, who I had just had lunch with him after completing the West Devils Lake Road cleanup. And we talked about sponsoring a 2020 $25,000 fishing derby, a two-day event. And I realized that the fireworks is an expensive program that is for the city, basically, and the tourism, and it gets a great crowd. And the two road cleanup projects are, have been done regularly now. But I would like to reintroduce this thing and get board approval so that we could do a fishing derby. I think it'd be a great thing for the hospitality industry, and it would showcase our lake. And I think it's important to showcase the lake, because the lake is not used. It hasn't been used. There are few good boats, but even the people who live on it don't use it like we used it in the 90s and such, when it was, when the D River was clean, and I could drive my boat to Kylo's. So Josh and Tom can talk about that, and I noticed that it was on the agenda. And I would like to just briefly bring up another separate item, and that is, I'd like the board to consider, reconsider buying the property, which entails the docks, the gas pump, the existing 1932 house, and using a combination of grants, which I think are available, and the private capital for buying jet skis to rent or canoes or such. I think the property is a good value, and we should think about positively buying that and creating more public property around the lake so the lake can be used. And I am asking you to reconsider that effort. And I know that Tina and Steve have been active in that, but we're at a dead standstill, and Noel's property is still available. Thank you.
Miles, I wanted to personally thank you for your persistence on the deed restriction. When I happened to be in City Hall and ran into the city attorney and asked him about it, and he said, "Just happened yesterday," and I was all excited, like I wanted to click my heels. So thank you for your work on that. You put a lot of work into that.
Four years seems an awful lot.
I really appreciate it, though, and I think it's going to be a huge benefit to the entire community.
I think so, too.
Miles, one other thing. I believe back when you proposed the fishing derby, that the board supported that, also with a permit, I believe, or monies for a permit. And I know that our bookkeeper, Teresa Kronstad, had talked to me when I was chairman about keeping that active and everything, and I told her to do that. So I believe it wasn't a lot of money for a permit or whatever it was.
Or insurance.
It was something, but we've committed, and that's still on the books for doing that, so.
I think it'd be a great event for showing what good management of the lake can do. And we certainly made an effort that has been rewarded so far, knock on wood, that the lake is cleaner than I've ever seen it. And it was clean at the end of the summer. Even though it's been a cool summer, it was cleaner than I've ever experienced.
Looks great.
Thank you, Miles.
Josh, do we have the fishing derby on the agenda?
Uh...
I don't think we have anything specific on it.
It's under special projects.
It should be potential fishing derby on the...
Oh, okay, sorry. I missed the potential part.
So Miles, just to clarify, too, so the way these things work, you buy an insurance policy that if the fish is caught, so the derby isn't paying $25,000.
No, the district is not liable for that. We buy an insurance policy. I have verified that the insurance is still available.
How much was it? Just out of curiosity, how much was it?
She thought that it would be about $1,600 for a $5,000 price, and a $10,000 price, and a $15,000 price. But she can't get an exact quote until the event is scheduled and such. And I've told Ed that that is still available, and I checked with her, and I checked with Christine Clapp, who is the biologist in Newport, who worked for the state. And she was excited about it because she thought that she can combine maybe the kids' fishing derby for half a day at the same time.
Great.
They do.
And that's in April?
She doesn't have an exact date yet, so it's up to us to see when we want to do it, and she'll try to...
What, when have we historically done it? When have we historically done it? The fishing derby, what month has it?
The kids' fishing derby, state puts it on, and it's free.
Yeah, when is that?
And she's had it in April and in May.
Okay.
She wants to have this year's in April, or next year's in April.
And you're thinking the adult one would be around there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it might be a good idea to have them both the same time. The adult fishing derby will last two days, so that we get at least one night of lodging.
Great. Thanks, Miles.
Thank you.
Larry, did you want to come up now?
I was just wondering if where we're at on doing something about the sediment that was dumped into Thompson Creek and the lake back in April, sometime in spring. And I'm just wondering if we're still talking about that, or where we're at.
Josh, do you want to go ahead and address that? We just actually talked about that in our executive session, but I'll let Josh update you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm still actually speaking with Dave Walts about that. It was just last week I had a conversation with him about it. It's still on the radar. They're still trying to figure out what's going on. Their official answer from the timber companies and from the Forest Services, they did everything that they were legally required to do, and that was their official answer. And that's what Dave conveyed to me. Says he believes, obviously, there's something more going on, or something to that effect, but there's no, you know, there's no way to investigate that.
But as far as our board is concerned, and I shouldn't speak for the whole board, I guess, until we make it official, but I know that we have discussed in past board meetings that we want to make it a priority to get it cleaned up. So I would agree with you that finding out who's responsible for it may be beyond anybody's ability to find somebody responsible and hold them accountable, but as far as getting the sediment out of there, I would sure like to see our board come up with a plan to do that.
Well, and I've had a couple of conversations as well, some of the residents from Sandpoint, Mark Christie in particular, I spoke with him about it. He said historically, some of the residents have gotten together, and they've had a dredging operation or something done because they consider that area, and I've looked at it on the flat maps, it's basically private property, that canal, you know, the section where the homes are on. And I told Mark that we would, of course, I'm sure the board would definitely support something like that, funding-wise or otherwise, just not as a project for that same reason. If it is, you know, if it is not in the waterway, we can't permit it or do any work there.
Oh, so Thompson Creek Canal is privately maintained? So like a county road that's privately maintained?
That is how I understand it.
Oh, okay.
From my conversation with Mark, which, you know, is actually a good thing, meaning that we can go in and do exactly what you want to do.
It's probably easier for them to maintain it.
Yeah, we need to do just what you're recommending.
Regulation-wise than for us.
Yeah, maybe a joint meeting between DLA and Devils Lake Water District to see about forming up a project and funding and whatever we need to do to get that effort actually done. You know, essentially the same thing we're doing in the river right now. And from what I understand, and I don't know if you can confirm that or not, Larry, it's, they've cleaned it out before. I mean, they've...
At least twice since I've owned my house.
Yeah.
But not since you guys have lived there, I don't think.
Yeah.
And when you say "they," who is "they"?
I don't know who did it. I assumed it was the county or something, but they dredged it. You know, they had big equipment in there and just got all the mud out of it.
I wonder, do you know approximately when the last time it was done?
How long have you guys owned your house?
Been there 10 years.
How many?
10 years.
I was going to say, it's probably been 12 or 15 years.
I wonder, Josh, if it's possible to look back in some of our history and see if maybe we have any information on it.
I have not came across that at all in any of the district stuff.
I didn't remember when it was done, but I can't...
Are there property owners, other property owners there that were there that might know? What about Lovejoy's? Lovejoy's?
No, they weren't there. Mark Christie might have been there.
Well, and that's what I think, like, you know, I'm circling back around to Mark, and that was my last conversation with him, was to get something going on that. So I've been, you know, waiting to see if they're going to wait for the next Neighbor Association meeting or what, to try and move in that direction. I do wish there was something more we could do about identifying the source of the issue. I mean, I've done everything, including driving my Jeep up through the hills, until I can't drive it any farther on private property. Because David mentioned, there were some flyware pictures of some recent, semi-recent construction out that way that could have also been the issue. And I drove every road you can imagine up the side of 1726 and down, and I couldn't get into any of that property where I could see it on the ground.
There were three of us, I think, that went up there and looked and found, you know, where it came from, or it was coming down the hill.
Yeah.
And it was pretty obvious, it's not, they weren't putting in a, you know, a foundation for a house or something.
Yeah.
Like a logging operation.
So Larry, the heavy rain event that we had last, last month, did it turn water?
A little bit.
But not as...
What it's doing now is when we get a big wind event, it picks the stuff up, and I mean, it just picks it up, and it's like it's coming down the creek, but it's actually being blown in, the stuff that's gone out towards the lake. It just gets picked up and churned and stuff.
We're doing everything the district physically can for the area. We've got the airstream over there, you know, any little bit of anything we can physically do to try and help. But that's the next steps that I left with Mark, was that we're going to get in there at least, get everything out that we can. We'll monitor, like we normally are, of course, and I've been in contact with Dave Walts. He knows the dates, he's got the pictures, he's got the NTU measurements of, you know, how turbid the water was and when it happened. So at the very minimum, it has all been recorded and given to the appropriate agencies.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sewer Committee, Brian.
So I picked up my 2018 tax return today. I'm working on an extension to October 15. Of course, that was full of good news. And I was thinking about the fact I get to come down and make excuses for why I haven't produced the sewer report for you guys yet. I thought maybe the only thing that would improve the day would be if I had a root canal. So anyway, no, no, it's not that.
The sun is shining.
Pardon?
The sun is shining, don't complain.
Yes, I'm not. I'm not. I've been playing my share of golf, too. Anyway, well, okay, realistically, I mean, I don't think there's a lot of stakeholders out there sitting on pins and needles for if we deliver this report, you know, tonight or a month or two from now, or had delivered it two months ago. So, and I don't think it's going to make much difference whether we produce it now or in December, which is what I'm going to tell you. If, and actually, I do have, well, Tina knows this, I've sent it to her, we have a pretty comprehensive final report.
Too comprehensive.
95% ready. Yeah, it is comprehensive, and it's complicated. And I'm trying to keep it as simple as complex information will allow. And as I became, you know, immersed in writing this thing, I came to think that really the report could be kind of a one-stop source for, for information, for anybody who wanted information about the project. We might need to put some links to some, to some documents, but links especially to the, to the financial evaluation, to the Mitch's, Mitch did this great task outline of sort of the steps that we would need to do. I think it's probably over-comprehensive, but that's a good thing, because it's like a checklist. I mean, some of the things we don't have to do, but everything that we would have to do is there. So, and, and then if I had gotten it to the board, you would have probably gotten it on Tuesday, and that just wouldn't have allowed you enough time to digest it at all. So, and I can't come to the November meeting. I won't be, I won't be here. So what I propose to do is get this thing done in, final, final, in the next couple of weeks, get it to the sewer committee members, give them a little more time to review and make suggestions, and then, and then hopefully get it to you folks two or three weeks maybe before the December meeting, so, so you can have a chance to review it. And, you know, I think one reaction you're going to have as well, you know, a lot of people won't read it. But, you know, I think it's our job to make the information available. You know, it's not the kind of information that you can dumb down. I mean, it's, you just got to lay it out, and for people who are interested in getting through it, they'll get through it.
That's what I was going to say, is complex, and I think foggy was one of the terms used. I agree with that, because I'm not good at reading technical information, but for whoever is going to pick up this baton and go forward with it, I do like the idea of everything, like a one-stop shop for, here's everything sewer that Dilwood has done and the sewer committee in the past 10-plus years.
Yeah, plus, you know, when we're fielding questions about it, I mean, you can say, well, you know, it's in the report, I mean, answer the question, but...
Well, I, sure, I think it's more important that for whoever, and it's probably going to be you or somebody that has already been involved with this, but, but to have everything together in one place to go forward with this, if somebody does decide to start, you know, a community or a public committee to move forward with a sewer, a sewer district or whatever they decide to do, to have all of that information together, I think is really valuable.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that that was really the job of our committee.
Because when we're all gone, somebody may pick this up and move, I mean, more than likely, somebody, when none of us are here, is going to say, "Boy, we should sewer the back of the lake," and there you go.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's a change, drastic changes in the law, I mean, they're not going to have to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
It's, it's all going to be there, and we can, could pick it up in Phase 2. So like I say, I apologize for the delay, but honestly, I don't think it's going to make that much difference in terms of, you know, regenerating our momentum once we get past this phase and getting things, things going again, so. So look forward to this, hopefully, around Thanksgiving.
Just in time for the Christmas season.
Yeah, there you go. So, anybody have any questions or concerns?
Thanks again for all your hard work, Brian. I know even pulling this all together is not easy, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I've enjoyed it, so don't worry about me.
Between nines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Special Projects Events and Communications. Hello.
The proxy for Tom Rice.
Hi, proxy for Tom Rice. But anyway, very short. We did a pickup, oh, sorry, Sue Henderson, I live on Loop Drive off of East Devils Lake Road. The Special Projects Committee did do a roadside pickup of West Devils Lake Road. I am fuzzy on the date. I think it was September 23.
Well, it was an impromptu Monday. I do remember that, right before...
It was the 23rd, I believe.
It was the 23rd.
A glorious day, it didn't rain.
Yay. 11 participants were there, and that includes three that were non-committee members that showed up that day to do that pickup. And 15 bags of trash were picked up along West Devils Lake Road, 180 pounds of trash. And that took them just under two hours to do. And after lunch, Miles Schlesinger was nice enough to take everybody to the Beach Club for lunch. Thank you, Miles.
Thank you, Miles.
Nice.
And it made for a very successful morning. So that's all I got to report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you, Miles.
Save Our Shoreline Water Monitoring. Oh, okay, thank you. All right. I did, I'll report a little bit. I did receive a phone call this evening from Jed Fly that said, "I have you on the list for a floating garden." So I, he said that he has been making several phone calls. He's left several messages with people that he's wondering if maybe are seasonal people not returning his call, but anyhow, they are active on that. And he said that, that he thought it might be a good idea to have two or three done so that when people are interested in one, we can get it to them right then instead of having to wait, so. District Projects and Operations, Devils Lake Conservation slash Aeration Project.
Well, now, all aeration system equipment is functioning and plant is required, thanks to John Tucci coming in and helping us repair an airline.
to John Tucci coming in and helping us repair an air line and also Bill Sexton and his employee coming out there for two days and hand digging our, our pipe up. Uh, the issue was we had a steel braided line, which is supposed to be, uh, more, more durable, which is why we installed it. We installed the aeration system. Um, however, something with a metal reacted to the ground and the water because the ditch is actually wet probably about six months out of the year. There's standing water in it right now. I just checked it this morning. So, um, something happened. That pipe did not like the ground. Uh, so what we did was John ordered a replacement pipe from a company in Portland. We have their number and information now. Uh, I think the pipe was $500 for this hot air blower hose, which is typically what he uses in systems. Uh, he tried to upgrade us on this one. He does have these working in other places, however, not these wet environments. So, we're actually still kind of going around with the pipe manufacturer to see if there's anything we can do for a warranty or anything like that since this was under 12 months. Um, so we'll see if we can recoup anything off of that. Uh, but we did, uh, go and hard pipe the compressor from the bottom of the compressor all the way out of the shed itself so we won't have this issue again. Most of that cost was hand digging out around that compressor and that pipe. So, we will not have to repeat that because now it's all in custom cut, measured and fit, two-inch galvanized pipe. So, we should be good for a while there. Um, I have also discussed with our, our late contractor, Bill, that uh, he believes that maybe we should hard pipe it out, all the way out to the manifold. He's not here this evening, so I guess we'll hold on that conversation for a little bit, maybe until November and talk about it. At the moment, everything is functioning fine. Uh, like I said, I've been checking it a little more often even just to make sure we don't have any other problems with that hose, but it seems to be okay at the moment. If anything, the compressor shed is at 70 degrees instead of 85, so it's running even cooler. I don't know if it's broken in or just the temperature or what. But, um, our, so, the next part of that was changing the compressor oil, which just went absolutely great. Made a small modification to the top, um, just a little blow-off bypass valve. Um, no issues at all there. Took a few minutes. I think that it takes like a third of a quart of oil. It's ridiculous and it's vegetable oil essentially. So, we're really good on the eco-friendliness on our shoreline equipment. Um, the diffusers, however, I sent a picture to the board last Friday, were very, very biofouled. Um, less than 12 months showed heavy, heavy, very heavy dense growth on those diffuser heads. So, once they cleaned them off, thanks again, once again to B X Sexton Construction and his employees out on the water with, uh, John Tucci checking those diffusers and pulling them out. Uh, they spent about a full day out there doing that and got, they believe, all the, all of the diffusers. We're looking for ways that we can maybe mark those off and make sure we get them a little bit, you know, more precisely in the future because it's, it's a little unwieldy trying to get those. You'll need flat water and definitely help and definitely watercraft that's going to handle that. Um, the good news is, is the pressure washer that they had mounted on the boat cleaned them off. They looked like absolute new. The valves, everything. So, it took, it appeared to take 100% of that biofowling off and they operated even better afterwards. So, even more efficient. Um, I spoke with John. He recommends at least a twice-a-year cleaning with fouling that heavy. I'd say I'd have to agree doing it once, uh, maybe in the spring was his recommendation, late winter, early spring, uh, and definitely once before our, our water warms up in about in July or so, uh, to get out and pull them and start taking them just so we have our, our highest level of efficiency out of that investment. But...
Last question here, Josh.
Sure.
I'm looking at the picture. So, um, you call that biomass?
Biofowling.
Fowling.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you find that? Is it...
Biofowling is basically, um, anything that's biological living, that's growing on some type of engineered piece of equipment or something like that that's impeding its, its functionality.
Like it's, uh, growing, um, here. Um, could that have created some back pressure that caused the, the hose to...
It, yeah, it potentially could have, but when we looked at the pressure in the line, the compressor was having no issues. There's no oil blowing out of it. The, the pressure gauge itself was very steady and we hadn't, hadn't lost a lot through the line. Um, I asked John that. He doesn't, he doesn't believe so, the way the manifold's set up because it has bypass valves and everything.
Has he seen this in any of the other lakes?
He's, he said he's seen some pretty heavy, heavy fouling, but that is probably in the top five.
So, are they all like that?
Yeah.
Have we thought about getting this tested to kind of get a little bit more education on actually what it is?
I'm going to send the photos to Sitzma, Dr. Sitzma up at PSU. And I'm trying. I tried to get him to come down, but class isn't in, so it's hard for somebody to make it all the way down there with the full class schedule.
The weather isn't good at the beach, right?
Um, yeah. And trying to get him down here in my, uh, in an effort to really, I do a cursory kind of plant, uh, ID, you know, someone who, that, that's definitely what he does. He's been involved with the lake before. He's wrote vegetation plans and documentation on our very lake. So, I think it'd be a great idea to get him down here. So, I'm trying to get him down here as soon as I can because I think that would be the next best idea for us to identify the stuff. A few of these things...
Yeah, I just see something similar to this on my...
Yeah.
Boat lift. So, if you need some samples, um, I had never really seen it grow and I've had the boat lift, you know, 12 years. So, did you guys see this picture?
I did see it. Maybe this isn't the right time to bring this up, but I was wondering, Josh, uh, with the, with the biomass that you found on the, the ceramic tiles, is that an indication that we have vegetation growth out in the depth of the lake? I was wondering, um, is, I don't know. It's...
Um, I mean, it certainly could be when there's, there's oxygen on the bottom, which is our goal of aerating it, that there could definitely be some vegetation growing down there.
I, I know that last, um, meeting you, you reported that there was about 0.3% weed growth and so we shouldn't be that concerned.
Correct.
And you pretty much, as far as I know, sounded like you went within about 50 feet of the shoreline. Is that correct?
Correct. It was a shoreline survey.
And then made extrapolations on that. Are you confident that those extrapolations are, are good so that we don't have more growth out in depth that we're not accounting for? I guess that's my question.
Well, there's no way to answer that question. That was a shoreline survey. So, no, I can't make that interpolation.
Let me ask you. Is there, um, a professional that does a, uh, mapping, if you will, of, uh, the bottom of the lake? I mean, I know we've had, the district has had in the past, erosion studies and things like that in mapping. Is there a company that specifically would map?
Like a biomass, a biomass survey?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, and can we find that out?
Sure.
And how much it would cost? Because I think that we need to get kind of to a starting point here. And there's so much that the district can do, you know, as far as visually looking, 50 feet out and not knowing what the rest is.
Correct. I agree.
And, uh, the, the amount of reaction that we've had, I think every board member and yourself of the plant growth, I'd just like to get a good baseline and see what that would cost from a professional. Um, so, could you do that?
Yeah, no problem.
For us?
I will likely have a price, uh, next week.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
So, how do they...
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say that, yeah, we appreciate what we've done so far and we know that really, um, because of our conversations when we started to see this growth, it was before, uh, we put in the aeration system and really the, the rebound of plant growth can go quickly. And it, it started well before we did our aeration system and it really is a result of, of lack of grass carp, you know, the diminishing amount. And, you know, as a, as a board, we just want to make sure that we've got an accurate...
We're on top of it.
Yeah, we're on top of it. Um, it's, it's an important aspect, so.
Well, and I think as a board, we should probably get together and talk about the vegetative plan and get, you know, I, I, you gave a great presentation last month on the vegetation that we've seen and now we've seen some different stuff on the tiles. So, um, we should probably come up with a more comprehensive vegetation plan and have it be an active...
Well, and even the Devils Lake plan, I think as things happen, we kind of have to move some things up on the plan. And, um, you know, it was inevitable. We, we know why this is happening. It's because the grass carp gone and the lake is healthy.
Well, lots of things, lots of things accelerated even that one factor, like a sea lion.
Right. Right. So, I...
We'll call it the sea lion effect.
I just think we get a basis and that we can measure from and, you know...
I, I think that's great. I think this is a great place to start to do that. Um, and then maybe the district can come up with a monitoring program alongside its, its, you know, the rest of its monitoring programs. So...
Right. I'd like you to manage the plan, not manage the bottom of the lake. You know, have to get cameras and everything. So...
That's the next, that's the next heading.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have on that.
Uh, the video monitoring?
Uh, working with Jimmy Dewey to get a camera up to, um, Jim Whistler's place up in the north part of the lake. Um, he's volunteered to let us put in his house, just lining it up. We even have the equipment purchased and everything's ready. So, um, just trying to get up there and get it done.
Cool.
Um, and, you know, still working on the one at Vivian's here and there, um, resetting it, just power fluctuations and things. So, I think it's one of those management scenarios for sure.
I'm going to ask a really ignorant question. Is that video on our website?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. It is. I think, I think the picture may be September 21st right now at this point because it was the last time I was over there working on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um, that's a discussion we can have later about better internet capabilities for those.
Yep.
We have other things, bigger fish to fry. Um, the Airstream Pro Shoreline Aerator has been fine. Uh, this is kind of old news on there, updated now. Motor and everything's been replaced. It's been operating over at Sandpoint near Thompson Creek. Um, district believe that would be a great location for, given the pollution coming down the Thompson Creek waterway. At the very least, we can get some aeration and oxygenation in there that is within our ability to do. Um, so, we've left it over there at, um, at Kathy's dock and have it tied up on, on one of our previous taps. So, uh, we'll keep an eye on that. I believe the next location, I spoke with Noel, um, at Blue Heron Landing. That area is, is, the water quality looks a little less clear than it had, especially when the water gets cooler. So, it may be a good idea to bring it back over there for a week or two. Uh, we already have an electrical tap there as well. So, um, it'll just be our monthly expense for electrical cost to operate it. So, it's, and it's good to have a couple of these, a couple of these really good spots that we're coming back to. So, I want to thank Noel definitely for letting us have that spot and Kathy and, uh, Pat Dooling and everyone that's let us, you know, hook this thing up and, and drill holes in their businesses or homes to, uh, run the electrical cords. So, thank you for that, for sure.
Uh, so do we have any new areas actually designated for it to move to? I know we've talked about some, but has any thing actually been done with any of those?
Not yet. Uh, one of our best locations was down at Crystal Lagoon and I spoke about quite a few times. Um, the issue that's happened there is more tidal sand came in this past winter since I've evaluated that project and now it's, it's too shallow to even put the Airstream in that area. So, uh, once again, you know, leading us into my, uh, update here on the D River Flood Protection.
So, do you think we should, um, look for, because we only have two places now, right? Kathy's and, and Blue Heron?
Correct. I thought we had one more.
Doolings.
Doolings.
Yeah, Doolings had one, but they didn't want to.
Yeah.
So, should we maybe work on identifying another location for that?
It's, it's not a bad idea. And just, just generally speaking, having this equipment in the district, it's not a bad idea to keep an eye out for any impacted areas around the lake, especially in a confined area where we can get electrical access. This thing is perfect for that. Um, and it's already done a great job. I, I evaluate Horseshoe Bay all the time and it's still clean up there.
I wonder if we shouldn't contact, since, uh, Pat and Mary don't want to participate any longer, um, I wonder if we shouldn't contact one of those other homeowners down there to see just so that if, if things change in Horseshoe Bay, we can go ahead and be on top of that and have a, a place to go.
Yeah.
I wonder if it got bad of Pat and Mary. What was the issue with...
I, I don't know. I don't know if they just maybe were having people around and it was on the dock and, and I know at one, you know, recreational.
Do you know?
I, I talked to him and I, he, he indicated to me that he couldn't take his boat in and out of his boat.
So, if it was during non-recreation season, like this time of year, would it maybe be okay?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Do you want to contact him, Josh?
Yeah.
And see if maybe it's during, you know, a different time of year, if it would work for him?
Sure.
Because since we have the infrastructure there, it would seem silly to have to put another one in. And since that is a pretty sensitive area for fouling.
Well, yeah, and even if...
He didn't have his boat out, uh, all year. He just morgueed on the end of his dock. So...
I think there is some problems with, with his use of the boat and, and the location...
But if we put it in there in, you know, November, October, maybe it would be okay?
Sure.
You know, if it's not during non-recreational time.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll ask.
We're checking into.
Yeah. And, and definitely, like I said, we'll, we'll keep an eye out and anyone else too that comes across something like that, neighbors and people, their little pockets around the lake that, um, you don't know there might be electrical access on. And, and I'm still keeping an eye out, of course, and looking for options to keep it as mobile as we can. I know we've talked in our last meeting about maybe a generator or something like that. And I haven't, I haven't completely given up on that idea yet.
Okay.
Um, so if I find something that's more efficient, that's going to make that more mobile, that it's definitely going to make that piece of equipment a lot more useful for us. But for the time being, um, yeah, let's just keep finding some locations and keep it going around to the places we have it. Uh, Vivian's is the other location that we have a tap. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. I was like, I knew there was one more.
Just remembered. So, it's like, I knew there was one more.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, but right now, we, and once again, you got whacked by that log down there. So, it'd be nice to get that.
Yeah. I was kind of shy of that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um...
Water quality.
Airstream Pro. Uh, this is the D River Devil Lake Flood Protection Heading. Oh, we can skip this if you want.
No.
Okay, okay. Um, what we have going on down in the D River right now is the log removal project first. Uh, we need to get those out of there. The sand's building up behind them. They got tossed in here last year during the winter storms and we just have not had the time or resources to get them out. I spoke with Lincoln City, uh, with Lila Bradley and Stephanie Reed because there are definitely logs in the First Street Canal as well that need removed. They've received complaints. We've received complaints. It's city property on that end. It's county property on the other end, to make that more clear. Um, so, long story short, the city is going to help us, uh, with funding the removal of those. I've gotten a couple of bids so far. Um, I spoke with Tina about it too, about maybe getting some volunteer effort from some people to truck off a little bit of the debris wood, the rotten stuff, um, you know, that we don't want to go throwing back in the lake or anywhere. Um, the other logs will, will pull off to the side. They can be wildlife and fish habitat where they need to be, you know, out of the managed channel. Um, it, I think the bids, well, the bids I have right now are between eight and $12,000 to do all of the work. And that's, you know, removing some that are gone, uh, getting the other ones out of the way and, and out of the channel and also out of the canal as well. Uh, the city, like I said, uh, said they would pick up about half that bill. So, I'm trying to find some more cost-saving measures off that invoice as well, see if we can even save some more money because it's something we'll most likely have to re-approach again, um, almost every year. It's, it's kind of a common maintenance activity for us. So...
I wonder if we get them out of there though. I, I mean, there's no way of knowing necessarily, but are they the same logs that go out and come in every year?
They...
You know...
Let's tag them.
Yeah.
This, this log was here.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll draw the little Devil's Lake monster on the side of it. We'll burn the tattoo in. So, we'll know.
But, I mean, seriously, because there's not a ton of logs in the D River vicinity. It's not like 51st Street or the Salletts where you have a lot of logs.
We have, we have a few of those invaders that come in and they bash up our fish structure and part of our deal with the Army Corps and Water Resources Department is that we take care of that fish structure, impoundment structure, every part of that dam. And having these giant logs there, obviously doing damage, destroying business, commercial property, destroying our in-water equipment and even capital investments that we have to manage like that. So, these are, this is something that I think falls squarely in, in getting out of there. Um, and, and it leads me into the next part of, of, uh, the update on the, the D River Channel that they have been definitely building up sediment and sand behind them. You can go out there and see the hydrology, that there's more sand built up on the backsides of those, uh, those big logs like that. And I've, I've been photo documenting that area for the past year and a half, two years. And, um, even here recently with some rains, there are so many giant logs perched. Um, you know...
I'm shocked at how shallow it, I mean, because we've had quite a bitter rain
Yeah.
in the last 30 days. And, I mean, it's still really shallow.
Yeah. And there's no, you know, there's no question as to whether or not those are, you know, they're not fish habitat. Fish can't swim on top of the sand, at least not most of our fish. Well, the ones, I guess, on East Devils Lake Road do, but those salmon are...
That's pavement.
They're good. Yeah. We made a highway.
Sand dollars.
So, that's going to be the first part of, of that effort.
You said that's about three weeks out?
I, I spoke with Bill and he thinks about three weeks. And he said they can jump off of any other work if they need to and it's about a day or two worth of work. And I may, I may, we'll probably call or email everybody and see if any volunteers want to go out, you know, and see if we can get any of that extra debris or trash or anything else out there that's in the channel and just clear our, our river channel as best we can. So.
Cool.
Now, the, the, the heavy hardest part of clearing our river, river channel as best we can is getting about 2,000 cubic yards of tidal sand out of there that's built up over the course of approximately 30 years. And this is something we've been speaking about in most of our meetings. We have, we are still moving forward on that, thankfully. I had conversations with Carrie Landham of DSL this week and about methods of removal, which is something we need to get done before we form up the permit and submit it to them. She would like us to contact Derek Wilson with ODFW, which I'll be doing this week, to see which method he would, they would rather us use from a fish wildlife perspective, whether it be something like a water jet type method, pumping, sluicing, or a standard excavation method. Both of those methods have been used in the channel in the past in the, in the 70, 80, I guess 100-year-plus history of this channel of people managing it. So, they both work. We know they both work. We're just trying to find what preference these agencies want at this point. I spoke with the Army Corps this past month. The Army Corps is referring to Department of State Lands Permit, which will be Carrie that I just spoke to about this. So, once, once I find out what the preferences of ODFW is, then I'll go back to Carrie and I'll say, "This is what, this is what they said. This is what they prefer. This is how I'm writing the permit. It's coming your way." Also, as part of this permit, before it gets submitted, going to turn it, hopefully turn it into a maintenance-type permit or at the very least make it a regular permit or some regularity to it and extend it to the east side of the bridge where we see all these impacts and where traditionally the district or fire department or concrete company or whomever that's managing the channel has been able to manage it somehow. That's, that's really what we need to do. I've also, once again, I met with Stephanie Reed and Lila Bradley from Lincoln City. They agree that that's a great way to go. They're fine helping us however they can in kind or whatever with the permit and getting it where it needs to be as far as a maintenance-type activity. So, we, we do have some assistance there from the city side as well.
Great.
Josh, just a quick question. Did we get updated numbers from Civil West? You know, there was conversation that maybe it wasn't calculated correctly last time and-
We did. I actually, they did not make a mistake. There are two benchmarks from ODOT. ODOT actually told us this, told Bill this when he was down there working on the impoundment a week or two ago, that they shot that same thing that Kevin had on the report, the exact same numbers with the same differential. So, I had, I authorized Kevin, I was additional, I can't remember what, a couple of hours to recalculate everything. And of course, he was, he was right the first time.
Okay.
So, it is some strange discrepancy between ODOT and their benchmarks. And like I said, this just came up too. Bill could elaborate a little more on what the engineer told him out there, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that, that will also be included as part of our permit and our efforts to extend this because we had, the district had, had that entire area surveyed from the east side of the bridge. And that was the purpose of that is to-
And are you still actively trying to get a bid on what the cost of this will be? Have that done?
For the removal of the excavation? I have not yet, but if we're doing a standard excavation, I can tell you that we can, that could be funded just from standard grades of, you know, dig, a couple of days' worth of digging and, and what it would cost to do such a thing. Of course, permitting and things we do in-house.
But we have to put that out for an RFP?
I don't, I'll have to double check, but I believe if it's under $125,000 on a project level, we can do a direct appointment. We could have even done a direct appointment for our aeration system, but we and the board had elected to do an RFP process just to make the process more fair and open. So, we can, we can most likely do that, you know, we can individually. I, I will definitely, any project, I get two to three bids at a minimum from each contractor, whether it's for trucking or operators or disposal, so. But, you know, I won't be getting too many bids for disposal. There's not too many people that can dispose things around here, so. Uh, any more questions on the D River? Water quality-
I do have a question. In just broad spectrum, when do you think that we can get this done?
Wow.
[laughing]
My, my hope and anticipation that within 12 months, we should be able to have this done. And the only reason I would say it's taking, it could possibly take that long is once you submit a permit to DSL, there's a big giant question mark. I know the Corps' lead time was six to eight months last time I asked them, which was two months ago. But that was for their removal fill permit. So, you know, it could take Carrie a week to get that.
Okay.
Obviously, best-case scenario.
I believe the other issue is the work window, isn't it?
Our in-water period, yeah. It will be closed out.
We're through February or something like that.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point as well. So, we would obviously have to time it up with that.
So, we could have it done by this February as well.
Well, we could. The actual project itself, Tina, is, is a day, two days maybe of, of just some very, very basic excavation-type work. So, it's, once again, it's just like the Regatta Park date restriction that Miles worked four years so diligently on removing. We're doing things the right way and the official way and, you know, the, the legal and, and public way we should. But those roadblocks have to be hurdled.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, water quality has been excellent. Uh, there has been some visible algae still. I spoke with Steve about this because his property is over there on that side of the lake as well, near Regatta Park. And I've noticed that being a lot more persistent, especially as a lot of the other areas of the lake have cleared up. So, I saw a lot less density this year, a lot clearer patches around the D River Channel, around the Yautso, around a lot of the other spots and Sandpoint even. But even times where it was fairly clear in the rest of the lake, there was still a density, a very visible density of that algae around Steve's house. And I spoke with John Tucci and he was here about it as well and showed him kind of the area. And he believes it's a species called Anabena, which is just a kind of a nasty macroalgae that is very common. Tends to be one of the, the smellier ones, though I haven't really noticed a lot of any sulfur odors or anything like that over there. But it is one that he's having a lot of difficulty himself and his business treating at the moment as well. So, we can look-
Should we put the airator at your house?
It blows it out. I've had it there before.
Yeah, I, I've noticed it around my dock too. I think it's just distributed. We, we have some.
Yeah, it's like the big ribbons of that reddish dying algae that I saw the most of down that way, so. And, and that's why in a couple of my previous emails, if we do ever look or, or need to add any additional equipment, whether it be Airstream or other lake bottom systems or whatever, at this point, that would be an area that I would keep an eye on or, or keep on the list for evaluating.
So, would it behoove us to find a place to put the Airstream Pro in that area?
You know, it wouldn't hurt. It never hurts to try those things, especially if we have a lower-cost hookup or we have some electricity we can tap into, if we have anyone who's willing to host the equipment because it's not, you know, it's not small equipment.
It's not easy to get my electricity down there.
It's cumbersome, yeah, at best.
Better than me.
Yeah, it, it works, Airstream-
Do you have Brian?
Be, be like-
Do you have power down at the lake?
220.
220.
Why have, how do you mean, uh, no. I have a lot of extension cords.
Can we drill, can we drill holes in your house and work on your electrical box? Come on, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay. But no, generally Airstreams work in more, generally in more confined areas. And I say generally because we haven't tested everywhere and I obviously don't know everything in the world. So, it, it, it's not doing a, a bad service by aerating, oxygenating and moving the water, that's for sure.
Well, and it seems to me, because I'm directly across the lake from Steve, that the wind definitely seems to have an impact on algae, whether it's on his side or my side. Because some days, my water will be crystal clear and on his side, it's more algae. And other days, I'm really algae and I go over to that side and it's crystal clear.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think it is a lot wind-driven.
And that's something, it, it may just be one of those, you know, characteristics of, of what's going on with it. But I, I'm going to a couple of these conferences here upcoming. I'm going to ask them, anybody I know-
Give us some ideas too of what it's doing.
Yeah, and that, I, I've got a little update on that too that came up, so. Our, okay, so yeah, water quality has been good. We briefly talked about the vegetation. I'm going to work on getting a contract company like a bathymetry, LiDAR-type situation. All that technology exists. It shouldn't be too hard to chase down. It should not be that expensive either. We spoke about Thompson Creek. DO is the only other thing I'll really mention. It's been great. Alex has actually came in a couple of times and has been working with it to try and get it on a regular maintenance schedule. Because I know that's something the board wanted a couple of months ago, is to try and get everything on some more regular maintenance schedule as far as the equipment and, and, you know, diffusers and compressors and, and everything that we have going, so. The numbers were very dialed in and it was looking at over 90% in and outside still. You know, I'm just not seeing a budge off that. I'm not seeing any of the same trends. I'm not seeing those dives in that number and where the sensor locks on and then declines into zero, which is what it has done every year up until when we installed and started monitoring after the aeration system. And does the opposite now. The sensor will lock on and then it will climb and then it'll stop to wherever point it's at.
Wow.
So, and, and it is always at an extremely healthy level, a 97% saturation, so. Better than most people that go to the ER.
[laughing]
That's all I have for-
Those people have biofowling?
I'm sure there's plenty. I don't want to check their diffusers. Uh, so general operations, I don't, I didn't have any updates on here, but something just came up in the past couple of weeks. Special District Association of Oregon offers a free FAA drone license to each of their districts because drones have became so useful and so important in almost every way, safety and security and otherwise. They're, they're giving them away for grants even. Anyways, Weston, our committee member times two, volunteered to go to Newport for a day and take this and become our FAA-registered drone pilot. So, we can potentially have that as one of our toolboxes now. And there are even some things moving forward as far as vegetation surveys that those may be useful with. There are some LiDAR-type mounted equipments and stuff that, everything is getting smaller, more available now. So, you know, the military used to have night vision and, you know, now the ghost hunters had it 20 years ago, so. Uh, we, I, I think it's important. We need to tap into some of these things because as we're talking, these changes are rapid. So, it's great to have the tools and have a consultant or somebody come in, do something, do a plan and give you that benchmark so you know where you're at. But truly, where, where a lot of our responsibility lies, mine lies, the district, is in monitoring. And that's something I see echoed through many, many of these conversations I have with other managers, even in, in drinking water districts, is that monitoring is the key factor to know where you're at and where you're going.
I agree. All right, anything else under general operations?
Nope.
Okay, new business?
Uh, new business has been going well. I gave you a brief update on Alex. She's been cutting out some time, been having her work on the maintenance plans, scientific equipment, stuff I desperately need help with to keep on as we, we take on these new projects and programs. Also, Eric Johnson, our PIO, started last month. He's been putting on a few posts on Facebook and kind of getting some intro information out there. So, if anyone has any comments or questions or suggestions, let me know. We'll keep working on that avenue together. I'm going to give him a few more responsibilities here as he has time and as I can get them handed over to him, a little bit of web, website maintenance and things I would like him to do. Keep our new website calendar updated, just a lot of general tasks. And I, I think I described a lot of these things out in some, some earlier correspondences I've had with the board, so.
Great. Yeah, the new Facebook page looks great.
Thanks.
And I, um, I think it would be great if people, you know, were able to send in pictures to put on there and/or ask people to tag Dilwood in their pictures.
You know, I think, I think they can send them to me because I'm, myself and Eric are administrators on it. And it goes into like a moderator-type thing. So, if you send it to me, it'll say, "Hey, you've got a new picture in your inbox. Do you want this to post?" Well, so, you know, because you never know if it's an advertiser or-
No, no, for sure. I think you should, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's moderated. We, we, we're moderating the website.
So, if somebody takes Devil's Lake, um, what is it, Devil's Lake, Oregon?
Yeah, Devil's Lake, Oregon.
In a picture, then it'll go to you before it shows up on the page?
Yes.
Cool.
It should.
So, the only other thing in this is a, is, is it possible to get an Instagram account?
I can ask, yeah. And it's probably a good thing because Instagram is pretty mu, it is Facebook, so.
Especially for pictures, you know, if we want to do pictures, I think Instagram is more user-friendly for that.
Yeah, no, I can, I'll ask Eric about getting that. The only other thing I want to discuss, it's not something, I don't think it's super pressing that we do it and I haven't asked him to do it yet, is maybe Nextdoor. Occasionally, there's something that pops up on there, but I don't see a lot of neighborhood discussions. So, I don't know if it's something we want to manage or, or put his time on yet. I personally don't think so at this point, but.
I know the Neighborhood Association started a Nextdoor account, I believe. And I don't know if anybody's active on that.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of chatter.
I think if we have a really good Facebook page and, and it's active and, and people know it's being monitored, that, that is every bit as good as, you know, what we were trying to use Nextdoor for as a Neighborhood Association. Like, hey, there's a jet ski floating in front of my house.
Yeah.
Who's missing a jet ski?
Yeah.
That type of stuff, I, you know, I think that Facebook could serve the same purpose.
Well, I mean, Facebook's our new telephone book, whether you like it or not. It's, it's pretty much-
And news.
Yeah, yeah. That's-
Unfortunately.
Yeah, at best.
It's a reality. All right.
Uh, that is about it, I think, other than that. So, you know, comment suggestions on that, let me know. If, if Bill Henderson has any more of those gorgeous water fowl or fish pictures, you can send them my way and I can get some of those out as well. So, just trying to advertise our good works. Along with that too, as time allows, I've been working with Eric to see about getting us some, some new brochures and some things together because we've got, I think the pictures, like people are jumping in the lake with straight-up wingtips on, so. I'm going to try and find something a little more updated. And we've, and we've got a lot of great things to talk about too, you know, new stuff and information needs put in, all the board efforts of the past several years.
Well, and if we can start having events at Regatta Grounds and stuff, we're definitely going to need-
Totally new. Hot dogs and cigars are allowed again, right, Miles?
And balloons.
And balloons, yeah. Non-agenda items, I don't have anything to update on emergency planning. That's kind of an ongoing conversation I think we're just going to keep having, so. We live next to the water, which we plan.
Yeah. Learn how to swim. All right, any other comments from the board? Nope. Any comments? All right, we are, Alex, did you have anything to add? Sorry, I shouldn't have passed over you.
I, I locked her in the lab this past month to get the calibrations done.
All right. I appreciate you staying on and I think, I speak for everybody, that it's nice to keep your expertise and to keep that fluidity going, you know, with what you've learned and keep it, rather than somebody new coming every year. I think it'll be great that you can, if you can maintain that schedule.
Yes, yes, I will.
Cool. All right, we are adjourned.
Oh, what's the schedule?
What?
We are-
Oh, I'm just thinking about it, so. I just had said that to people because I'd actually asked Mitch who he thought was-
I got you down on Wednesday for some reason from nine to one.
From my friends that I, I just like, I hope I don't have to.
Oh, I know.
Sure. Not a hell of a-
There it is. There it is. That's, that's what I wanted to go maybe collect some samples with and something.
Okay.
That's one thing we can do if the weather lays out sometimes.
So, Wednesday? Okay.
I need to try and get, uh, some, bought some mud off the bottom of our lake in 20 feet of water and send it to John Tucci to have him cook it.
Do you happen to know who he uses?
The midweek- The midweek.